I've got 6:05. We're making a call as we get going.
...... to the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands the one nation under God, with the judgment of the earth and the heavens.
All right, welcome to our little talk about a meeting for a big fifth meeting. Do you have a, or actually, do you have a roll call please?
Mr. Dan Hundy.
Here.
Mr. Kenny Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Chris Hewitt.
Here.
Mr. Clay Cropper.
Here.
I'm Mark, Ms. Jenny Palfrey, and Ms. Sarah Cunningham.
I did talk to Jenny today. She returned from the hospital. She's at home now, but she was not able to come tonight. Do you have the agenda in front of you? Would you, do you want to make any changes? You want to add anything to the agenda?
No, let's just say that it's a special.
You want to add that to new or old business?
No, we'll just do it as a new business.
Okay. Well, I had an item number one under new business to business license. Or this.
This is.
Discussion. All right, anything else? All right. Motion to approve the agenda by Jim, the second, by Carissa. All in favor? All right, motion carries. All right, there are three sets of minutes. We'll kind of go through these. This is from the fifteenth.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
I was eating thirty-eight thousand, eight thousand.
It was around thirty thousand. So that was the, is that typo?
There's an extra zero on eating.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying you wanted to grant the bid to eating, but there's an eight thousand dollar difference between the two.
They didn't include Lake Street up there. Look around, too.
Okay.
What did we find out about Duck Island yesterday?
Duck Island, according to PVA's office, and we ran this by surveyors and the engineer, and that is in the city. That Duck Island is the city. Yes, sir.
Well, shouldn't you put on there somewhere what Kenny just said, that if anybody else is looking at that, they want to know why there's discrepancy and why eating was granted the thing? Is that addressed anywhere?
It's in the file.
Oh, I didn't see that part. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it just says down there. I saw it.
And then we'll make the correction to thirty-eight thousand. All in favor? All right, motion carries for the fifteenth minutes. A meeting, a special meeting, a special call, just to talk about the water rate. Motion, yes, sir.
I'll watch out.
Motion, Mike. Carissa, second by the client. All in favor? All right, motion carries. Sorry, I'm right. And then the twenty-third was a special meeting for the second reading on eight thirty-one if there's a warrant. Motion by Kenny, uh, second, second by Carissa.
All in favor?
All right, motion carries. All right, moving into reports. We skipped reports for last month, so Chief, we got two sets of reports to do. This is April, so if you could kind of give us the highlights of this.
April passed, and you're high on months, so look at these. Our trends, pretty much the norm is what we call norm for us. April was a busy market for flooding fires that the electric storms go through, have multiple lightning strike fires such as that, or overdoses were pretty much the normal for the month. We're rotating the trucks to try to save some lifespan for the new rig gets here, so... Any questions on April? May, we've been a bit busy here lately, but in April, I think it has many structural fires. The overdoses though were more common. I was just telling these people back there, we chit-chatted a few minutes ago. We've had two overdoses in the county today, and we had ten in the county over the weekend. Also numerous motorcycle wrecks. It has not been very favorable for motorcycle riders in the last week. So just be aware of motorcycles on the road, so watch with caution. Also seems to be a new norm now. They used to sit like the Walmart parking lot and the Barnes parking lot and different places and shoot up. Now it seems like they like to drive down the road. So Thursday night, firehouse got called, was the police scanner. Somebody was shooting up between cars, wheels down. At the same time, they throw somebody out of a vehicle, it's calling the firehouse. Today, the one equipment, got a truck trailer loaded, kind of vehicle, with kids in the car, overdose. Mom was trying to throw him into the passenger seat and get in the driver's seat, but she could get the hell out of there before the crew showed up. That's what we're working with now. So, you know, it's not, they're not doing it at home, they're not sitting in the motel room. Now they like to drive down the road and look more common. They used to, they used to have one of them once in a while, but it's been very common here in the last, the last month. So just be vigilant when you're driving down the road. You know, it ain't always somebody drunk driving, now it's gotta get somebody drunk. Any questions, Kenny? Thank you.
All right, so thank you, Chief. Chief Gels, you got your April stats here.
There's the April numbers. If you want to take a look at that and any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Maybe you got an answer. Why are the, why are the town cops going down in Telstar trailer park in the third level? He was sitting down there for an hour yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yesterday or Saturday. Might have been Saturday. He's sitting down there for an hour and just sitting down and far back to about the third level that he could get.
You know what time it was?
It was one noon with SUV. And I don't think it was.
It was a Saturday?
I think it was Saturday.
I'll check.
I mean, I don't know why they're even down there in Virginia, but why they're down there so long is, I don't know. I guess he was napping, I don't know.
I'll check. It was after midnight?
It was like early afternoon, because I was in the garage and my mom came up there and said, "Police went down there," and it was probably thirty-five or forty minutes later. She said, "They're still sitting down there."
I don't know. I'll check. Be back for you.
I'm kind of being curious.
Any other questions? We'll stick over to the main. Here, Bob. Chief, I think you wanted to update them on the CAD or on the file complaint that we talked about at the first, on the fifteenth of May.
First card you go see is the Willhorn complaint. So I went down and I talked to those two people right there, and that is their phone numbers about their dog.
Who'd you say?
That's Willhorn.
Okay.
And that's the address, it's thirteen and thirty. And the names of the people and who I talked to. They're telling me he was having issues with the dog and he's getting fair warning, and they understood. As far as I know, he hasn't had any more calls. This is the King's Drive complaint. Went up there and there wasn't any dogs that I could find that day. And I checked on all prior calls for this year up on that street, and there wasn't any on the dog.
Were you looking on the left, in that wayhouse?
There weren't any dogs down at all.
Well, I found out a couple days ago in the back of the alley.
Okay. Let's try that one. So we did follow up on it, so there you go.
Kind of a couple days ago.
Okay.
They took her out on that street, didn't they?
I haven't had any other calls out there, so if they do, we know where to go.
I think they, they knew they were getting complaints on it. They got rid of them.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for the station? All right, moving on. Jamie's not here. This is, this is just a report from the test team.
The dog was a good dog.
One of the four tests. From... And then, Ken?
Pretty good numbers on the sewer sampling. Quite simply, more water being used, so we get better numbers. Those are all in compliance. Maintenance was done down on Judah Street. We get it, the line cleaned all those, as well as Ralph Street. Maintenance was done on that, that early, early part of the month. Excuse me, late, later part of the month, so we're keeping up with our quarterly maintenance going there.
You guys also found a problem at the old high school, the electric service?
Yeah. Actually, it had a tree limb swinging back and it was shorting out. A problem that would, if we hadn't been up there at the time and seen the wind blowing that hard and swinging a branch into it, and we would probably, we never suspected that would be a problem, so we eliminated that, got the tree trimmed, and hopefully that won't be an issue anymore.
It had caused a couple hundred dollars, several hundred dollars worth of back, back switch damage.
Yeah, caused some internal parts damage to our station. And it just happened to be sitting up there and seeing it blow back and arc, so able to get that trimmed and out of the way, so hopefully.
Did they have a pump station?
Yeah, one up by the, by the middle. No, we check them every day, yeah.
I mean, as far as...
Yeah, uh-huh. We, like I said, everything's trimmed back, but the wind was blowing really hard that day, and we'd never seen that if we hadn't been up there at the time, so...
Anything else?
Oh, yeah. I'll dance for a little bit.
Sure.
Who inspects these fire hydrants?
Who inspects the fire hydrant? Us with the water department will go out and test them.
All of them?
Yeah. Everything in, everything in the city, and then we spot check the family hydrants that we operate.
Okay. I was just, I was just concerned, because this last house that was burnt, um, down there by Penn Gitzens.
Southern.
Yeah. Did they have a problem with that hydrant?
Yes.
What was the matter with that?
The hydrant wasn't installed, the ground was soft and everything, so they didn't turn it on, so it would settle, and the crew tagged it and stole the one right down the street. The one down the street was good, but that's the last hydrant, if I understand off the Rock Hill line, I think, something like that, so it's on a different line itself than the one they tagged onto.
All right.
Just turn it back on.
Turn it back on there, yeah.
All right.
We're going to start doing hydrant tests next month. We'll start following them.
Did you check those yearly, or?
Yeah.
Yearly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Anything else for Sue?
I'll answer. Kenny was typing the cash report, it's six DR seventeen hundred fifty-six. Didn't want to come in office and do it, he wanted to stay in the car.
Okay.
Was weird, he was way down there.
He wanted to go down there, he said it was, nobody was bothering him, or he could do it.
All right, anything else for Sue? Ken? Thank you, Ken. Nothing for real. Jamie's not here.
I got a question about the...
Yeah.
This may go into Rock Hill Ridge. Are we going to clean the streets the week before work?
We just, last week, we had the certification class for the inmates, and I got word this morning from the jailer that all the backgrounds are now back, so as of today, we could get the inmates.
Like the drains and all the dry rigs down in front of Greg's station, the American stop line, they all need to be cleaned and garbage?
So now we could get the inmates, they actually sweep that by hand. You guys take them up and they sweep and shovel.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's done before we head.
Yes. Yeah, everybody should be back tomorrow. Robbie was on vacation last week.
Should we get the inmates back or we gonna start another one, my lady?
That's questionable, because they only have ten inmates that you can get out, so even though they got them back, they may not even know, so...
How, how do you request the inmates? I mean, how do you have to, can you pass them like a couple days in the game?
No, you have to call Mr. Green at the jail, and then he, tell him how many you did, and then tell him whether or not they have crews available.
Each day?
Call each day? Yeah.
You can't reserve them?
I don't know.
Well, because you never know which one will be there. They may get released, because they're classified, so they may get released today, but at the end of the day, maybe seven of them off.
In, for Parks and Rec, the only thing that we're just going to bring up was Rock Hill Ridge, their, the last scheduled meeting is tomorrow night. They'll just be finalized in their top six. We'll just finalize everything, where we're at on everything.
I have a request on that. Can you also produce, um... My...
The vendors' sponsors?
The vendors?
Yeah.
And the sponsors? Amy's sponsoring?
Yeah. Amy's actually got that request in right now, to get that information, so that I can have it for that meeting. And we know where we're at on all vendors. Where we at, twenty-nine vendors?
No, thirty-one.
Thirty-one vendors. All right, Rick, do you have anything?
I got on there, I got the active review business license list. Just list of everything in the system as of today, whether they have an active license or whether it's waiting on something from them, whether it's payroll taxes or an actual business license.
So these are all folks that are doing business, or companies that are doing business in the city that don't have an license?
That do not?
That do and do not. They're next.
The review needs...
Right, review needs or something missing, that they do not have an application, or they're behind on payroll payments, or something, payroll tax payments, or something like that.
Ben, what's your break, Rick?
It's a brand.
Yeah, they do it at Brent.
Where is it?
At Lexington.
No, where is it in Garrett?
Uh, they do it at Walmart, I know, so they can do it at multiple places.
Oh, okay. All right.
And the next thing there is another, threw together thing I've done, just of what I've kept track of that I've done for the past two months. We sent out the business license renewal letters, six hundred of them. I sent out a hundred thirty-two letters for payroll taxes that are delinquent between third, fourth, and the first quarter of this year, and it goes on down from there. We did, I sent out forty-eight letters regarding delinquent property taxes, and we did get seventeen of those paid. There's still more, I think we're putting wings on, and they're untangible, I'm not sure, I think they're doing swamp ones on there.
Any questions for Rick? All right, there was, for ABC, there was one temporary license. I've got the application. I've not sent this on to the state yet, but it's a temporary license for Rock Hill Ridge for a steam oil station, it's a liquor box. Full license is on here, if you want to look at it. It's, the license will only be good for one day, for June twenty-fourth, from eight AM until eleven fifty-five PM. That's a temporary license for sales.
Should we start hiring at eight AM?
Well, it's because of the way the licensing works. Well, our license, standard license, it's eighteen... All right, in the merit report, Chris, I'll let you kind of tell what the little bit of lore on this, but the city was awarded the sidewalk grant, one that we'd been working on for several months, to finish the connector out Warsaw Road to the high school. That is a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar project.
Is it going to be next to the road? Is it going to be, is it green space between Warsaw Road and sidewalk, or is it going to look like where it already is?
Well, hopefully it won't look like that with the box curb, because that road is too busy and the speed's too fast. Now, what has to happen is, even though the governor's office called two weeks, a week and a half ago, and now we've actually got the official letter, but now the state has to do what they do, which is hurry up and wait. They have to give us permission to move to the next phase, which is the engineering. Once they give us a go-ahead, then everything will then be covered. It'll be a coverage expense. If we move forward now, we start the engineering, they won't cover it until they tell us to start, so they won't reimburse us for those costs. So we just have to basically wait until they tell us to go ahead and start with the engineering, and then once we get to the engineering part, then I can engineer the place. It'll be how, how they work with the right-of-way and the easier stuff.
So the seven or eight properties is going to be doing that near the pool? You ain't got nothing to say about it?
They keep it in the right-ways, they won't have as much, they'll still have some concern. They already have a voice in it, but if it's in the state right-of-way, often it's a concern. It varies still, yeah, because of the ditches, some of the culverts extended out far. Then, once it's engineered, then we'll have, then we'll know. But I want, at least to have the buffer, if we do it straight beside the road. But some of the other things that we've kind of talked about was what would it look like if we made it more natural, where it went around the ditches and then come back up, you know, not, not as straight, but once we get to that point in the engineering, then we'll be able to change this from the way we kind of got laid out there to, you know, to another way, and then we can, then that'll be up the western sidewalk way, but that has been approved and get confirmation from the governor's office on that, so that 'd be really good. This is the second time, I think, the city's required to do that grant. First time was fifty thousand dollars, and we didn't even do the engineering the last time, so this should cover it. Anything else, Chris? Well, I was going to turn it over to you, and then you said you, so I just went over. The health department sent a letter out about mosquitoes. I just, they asked me to forward it on, so this is about the sneaker virus. I think I did this last year, so that's just me letting you all know about that letter. All right, moving into old business. The gas franchise bids were received, and after talking with the franchise attorney, she recommended that, that we table this until the next meeting, because she's still waiting on some documentation, waiting for Duke to sign off on the documentation on the tax taxes. They agreed to it, they just haven't fully executed it and returned it to us, so she would rather us not accept their bid until that's, until that is done. The bid in its entirety is on the website, it's a very extensive document, three one we've been working on for so long, but the entire document, all the sections are, are made available. So we'll just carry forward this until the next meeting, you know, not take any action on it. And also, the same with the small cell franchise bids. We did get one bid in from Expanet Systems, but there's several things that we, we need to discuss, that she wants to still discuss with them before she's ready to make, or to allow the, a recommendation through the three on, that they set on, on either of these. With that being said, the gist of it is, we're not ready to accept either of these bids yet. But all of the information is there if you wish to read it. Some of it is pretty extensive. All right, and then it doesn't reflect it on here, but in new business, item one, we added a business license ordinance discussion. We'll pass those off this. All right, there's two sets. The first one that's coming around is the current... There's also a copy of the one that was replaced, the older one. Okay, Ken, I know you wanted to talk about this, but this is, we'll talk about it. I just wanted to start with the third one, so everybody knows what we're talking about. I've got it up on the screen, just kind of fast-forwarding through the part. I've got it up on the screen, just kind of fast-forwarding through the part, um... Did I print the whole, it should be eight-two-eight? She's printing that, sorry, I printed the wrong one for you. This is the current one that's on the books right now that we passed back in March. What this one changed in essence was, it tried to level the playing field between the previous version, which you have a copy of, um, which had it broken down into tiers. If you look on to page, I guess we're going to do page three, under article five, under the schedule of fees, what it, the original way that this was, was it broke it down into, into a set amount based on the business type. So if your business type was listed here or something that was relevant to it, it just gave you the flat fee that you paid. Um, what it did not take into account for is the difference between, um, if a person, uh, if, if a business, for example, a painter does ten thousand dollars worth of business a year, or if he does ten million dollars worth of business a year, it was the same rate. The biggest problem with this that we talked about and then we heard the most complaints about was the fact of just that. That, uh, small businesses that did forty, fifty, sixty dollars here for a business, paid a hundred-dollar business license, they paid the same amount as a business that gets sixty million dollars worth of business. So we tried to fix that by doing it on a percentage of what their sales were, on their receipts, so that it made it more fair. And then, um, also, the lowest, according to this ordinance, the lowest fee that we had anywhere in here was fifty dollars. And that was for, uh, certain, uh, I forget where. But, the lowest fee in here was fifty dollars. One thing that we did was the current fee that we have, or the current license that we did, was we set the limits at forty dollars a year would be the minimum, and then set a cap at it at a thousand, um, which if you went back to the existing one, the highest priced one was, I think, five hundred dollars, and that was for a junkyard, which we didn't even have. Is that correct? So, that's kind of how we came, that's kind of how we came up with that discussion, or that, uh, structure. I'll wait for her to get those, and actually install it, so she can get those to you, so you can look the same thing. All right, so what this did is this put it on a percentage, and it levied, a levied amount of the taxable gross receipts of one-half of one percent, or in a decimal format, point zero 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 five times your taxable receipts. Um, and what we tried to do is establish that very, very low, so that it wasn't, uh, any kind of a, of a, uh, a substantial hit. However, it re, it didn't, um, it created a separation between a business that did very little business paying a, a, a bigger portion of their fee, and a business made a lot of, or did a lot of business, it paid a very little amount. Um, so that's kind of how we came up with it. Now, the only thing that makes it kind of complicated is the form that, um, that we used, that was, uh, is to use the calculator. The only reason that form is complicated is because the state mandates the form that has to be used, um, and that is the state's form that they require us to use. The form that we had originally designed, uh, was one-page, and it was very simple. The state would only allow that state form to be used, and it has multiple different tax structures on there, it has net receipts, net profits, gross receipts, uh, several different other calculations on there. The only one, the only section that is relative to our business license is just the gross, gross receipts calculation section, so.
That's the only thing they need, the only thing they need to show us? Is the gross?
Is the gross receipts. And basically, in a nutshell, it's, it's the gross receipts of the business that you did in the city limits, times point zero 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 five, and that establishes what your business license is. The caps are if you did less than, if you did eighty thousand dollars for less of gross receipts, then you're at the minimum rate of forty dollars. If you did more than two million dollars worth of business, then you were capped at one thousand dollars.
The gross receipts in the city limits?
In the city limits, it's not total gross receipts, it's just the work that's performed in the city limits. So if you're a, a mobile company that does work inside and outside the city limits, it's just the work that's done in the city.
But you just not said that the state offers different ways that we could, or different tiers that we could do the business type?
It's, they synchronize the form that you're allowed.
Yes, it's not places do, um, net, uh, gross profit, some do gross receipts, um, everybody does it differently, so they have a unified form that you have to be able to accept. Okay, so they're, so that everybody has to be able to do this one form, there are multiple different ways that it can be done. So yes, you are correct, there are, there are...
Different ways, where is that?
And you can do a variety.
Where is that form?
It's on the website, and that's what everybody is going on.
No, where is the form that you can choose from?
You can choose, you can make, uh, you can do a combination of anything that you want. You don't have to pick one thing, the state doesn't tell you, you have to pick one thing. This form has all of those items in there, so you make, say, if you want something in gross receipts and net profit, you can do a combo of whatever it is that you want to do.
Can you say it to your desktop?
Can you go to what's on, if you search, uh, well, okay.
That's, it's points to the state's website, it's only in our form.
Yes, yeah, it goes to, it's, we have the state's point, but it actually gives you instructions on there about if you do business outside the city, how to calculate the amounts that you pay for the city, based on your revenues and based on your payroll. So there's actual calculation, the form is long because it has that many different calculation spreadsheets in it. It helps you calculate gross, adjust, um, gross receipts, adjusted gross receipts, or if you...
I forgot, I did open it yesterday, I had to open it up, I have to back. If I was actually starting to fill this out for my, for my company, for my business.
So page one is just all of the information. So this is everything about the business, and in this, all the information, gives me, um, employees, um, tax ID numbers, gives me the, um, officer that, um, is responsible for everything, this is your person that is responsible for, um, if I have to go with payroll taxes, okay? Then when you start on your second page, the second page is where you determine your tax, but there are other, um, schedules that go into this, so if you'll see on line one where it says adjusted gross, um, or the, um, adjusted net, so you can do gross or net, um, or do gross, and then you go over to schedule G, which I think is page five, and use that on your tax forms.
This is very complicated. This isn't our form. I have got to stress this over and over and over, the state requires the use of this form. It doesn't matter what city you go to in the state, you go to Florence, you can use the same form, you go to Bellevue, you use the same form, go to Lexington, you use the same form, Hyphal, same form.
We, we all have to be able to accept this, effective July first, we all have to be able to accept this form. You can set up your own form, but you have to accept this form, and they did that so that they can all be uniform. So instead of always trying to have one form and this form coming into, it's just easier to use the state's form, and that way we have one form.
Is there, is there anything like saying that you can't offer, like, someone can help us on, and turn it out, kind of like a, like a cheat sheet?
It is on the website, there's a Q and A, Brett, um, did a question-answer cheat sheet, there are an instruction page.
And it's okay, isn't it?
There's a business license Q and A, so this is the state's instruction form, so it tells you section by section, it tells you where to find the information, how to fill it out, what to get, um, it has, you know, wherever you search, if you want to do amendments, um, all that kind of stuff.
I got a question. I'm sorry, well, you, you went back and said you can do net, free, can you do gross?
Yes.
So that business owner has a choice?
No.
That's what I'm, I'm thinking.
No, the business owner does not.
It's us that decide.
It's the city has the, has the...
That's on front end.
Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I apologize. Yes, you have, you as a council have the ability to choose, but not the, the business owner. You, the council has set gross receipts, is what we have ours set on. And then the business licenses, um, I'm sorry, uh, you have his, um, facts and questions, or is that what that is?
Sure.
Then he went through and pulled up things to make it a little easier, so if you have specific questions, he's pulled some things out of ordinances and some things in here to make this a little easier for people to be able to see.
It's most of the questions we've had over the last few days of having this, or something, any answer they, you know, the own accountant, they said, yeah, twenty minutes later they were signing, it was already into us, so.
But, uh, your accountant is going to be able to pull this stuff off of your tax forms in, in no time. I mean, somebody who doesn't usually, look, if you don't do your taxes and you don't, you know, you have someone who does those things, you're not going to know where to go look for those kind of items, but your tax people are going to be able to find those, give you what your adjustments are. Um, the biggest thing is to make sure that they do the factor, if you do business, if, if a hundred percent of your business is in the city, it's kind of easy, it's a hundred percent, um, of your revenues. If you do business outside the city, there's two factors in there, one's a gross receipt factor, and another is a payroll factor.
All right, I understand.
Do those two, you come up with your number. That way you do that based on your total revenue, in the way that the state states is, that's how you come up with what you're...
So can I sell insurance in my office, or get, uh, I had clients all over the state, okay?
Uh-huh.
So you tell me, like, I had business in Boone County, my clients are paying their, they pay their bill online, they don't, I don't...
So you're going to use it as a factor, so you start on page two.
I gotta go through all my customers, and come up with this form.
But wouldn't it be different, you don't, you, you say, like, you say here, like, you do, even though that your clients are out of the city?
Yeah.
Don't you do your work, you're in the city, like in the office?
I can go to someone's house and sell their insurance, I didn't do it at that office.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, you do go outside the city.
Yeah, so how am I supposed to come, all right, so how am I supposed to, so I'm supposed to go through the whole list and do that deal?
You, you have to determine what your revenue, um, produced in the city is, yes, in order to kind of have a proper factor, and you'll want to do that so you can do it fairly, because you don't want to overestimate it, and you don't want to underestimate either, you know, so...
Well, yeah, it's just more work for us to be compliant.
You're correct.
Which is, both ways. I mean, understanding, I understand the purpose, okay, don't get me wrong, I'm just not happy about it.
I can understand, but they tell you to do more work.
So my accountant charges me X dollars amount an hour to do this, I let him do it, then it's going to, it just costs, besides whatever amount I come up with, then I got to pay him to do it. I mean, I think at the phone call, it's a minimum, you're talking about, a hundred dollars.
Look, I mean, you can pull your tax forms and do it.
Well, I know that, but, I mean, you just said, we got to get a cheat sheet to do it, I'm, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, we just put one together because people didn't want to bring the instructions, and they wanted to call me and me tell them how to fill out the form.
But can you see where it gets costly for me to do, okay, I've got clients in Boone County, Ken County, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah, so you're going to run for what you do in Dry Ridge.
All right, so this, so I just do, any clients of mine that are in, sending them to Dry Ridge?
That's your revenue.
That's it?
When you're sitting in Dry Ridge. Yeah, but you're going to, you're going to do your factors, though, so you're going to take your total revenue, and, and one line, you're going to divide that by the revenue, or you're going to take your city revenue, divide it by your total revenue, to get a percentage. So your city of Dry Ridge, um, residents are the revenue that you've made in the city.
Okay. With anybody that does business, no matter what the business is, you've got to have a license, right?
Right.
So if somebody's selling coal in the city limits, they got to have a license.
Sure.
What about all these people that we had, you know, yard sales, everybody coming for your license?
Now, yard sale, is that a...
Uh, 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 they're making money.
But they're in specific exemptions for yard sales.
Well, that's bullshit. If you're, you're telling, you're on this court.
Hey, do you really want to pay me to issue a business license?
I'm just saying, if they're doing business in the county, or not, they're doing business in the city, you want, business is business, whether it's a penny or a million dollars.
Okay, I'm just saying, you have to think about your expense to what it's going to cost, okay? Because the time it takes to put that in, and all that stuff...
Well, they're doing, they did business here.
Okay, I'm just saying, you have, you have every right to say that.
Oh, well, I'm just bringing, uh, bringing it up, don't inform, we'll discuss it, and that's fine, they're, they're making money here, so why don't they, you're charging forty dollars, you don't have yard sales, forty bucks.
I'm, that, that was kind of actually what I was going to add, um, the city that we came from, they made people get a permit to have a yard sale, there was a yard sale permit, and that's how they...
It used to be that they'd give a two, three yard sale in a year, but any... Same difference, right, right.
I'm just curious if there was a permit for yard sale. It's just, it's just trying to, um, it's time to, to be, to try to, um, keep track of all that.
Okay, right, great point. Same as time continuing to me to go fill all my, these are, you know, all my customers.
If, if this council wishes to switch it and us start charging for, um, that, we will be happy for it.
Okay, that's fine.
I will, I will make the sound, if this council wishes for us to charge for, um, yard sales and for us to track that, I will be happy to do so.
Well, the, the purpose of this ordinance is to create revenue for the city if you're doing business in the city, but you made exceptions or exemptions.
For yard sales.
The exceptions are right here.
Uh-uh.
It's nonprofits, government agencies, schools, churches, minors, and anything else where KRS says for federal law states own.
Well, that's ambiguous, the last one right there.
The last, anything that KRS says we can't, or is exempt for federal law.
Now, the word imposition, it gets, it's an imposition on everybody.
It's an imposition that such tax would violate a provision of the state, Brett...
So yard sales is an imposition on yard sales being for the state.
No.
It doesn't like... The minors, they're going to charge, if a boy charts both yards, they're not going to, neighbor yard, they're not going to have him get a license.
All right.
But a yard sale is once maybe twice per year, it's not like they're having yard sales all year, and that would be a different story.
All right. Okay, understand that, Mr. Brockman here does the fireworks state, every year, fourth of July, he gets charged five hundred dollars? Now, should he have to pay that, it's one time a year, and somebody's going to...
Well, that is a big chunk of his income.
Not really.
Well, okay, I'm saying it's fair game, I mean, you're telling me that you...
Well, I'm just talking about, like, where it's expensive, and that's where he gets one hundred percent of his income.
He gets, he gets most of it from disability.
Well, I, I mean, like, what he makes in the law...
He can get it from working.
I can guarantee you that.
Huh?
How's your license five hundred dollars?
By the time he end up, by the time you pay him all that's what he has.
Well, I'm just asking, it's right on the horse right here. Business is business, okay?
The ordinance that repealed the yard sale thing, getting established, the existing ordinance didn't have any kind of dollar amount, they just had to come in and get three permits. And like Kitty said, it was two permits, three, or something like that.
Okay, well, if you want to, if you want to generate more revenue, which helps everybody so we can...
Was, was last year.
If you're going to do any business in the city, well, you know, you have yard sales, forty bucks, twenty bucks, I mean, I don't know, mate, pick a number, he's, he's got to, he's got to get a permit to sell fireworks.
Actually, we were just discussing that, the way he runs it, he runs it underneath the other stop, that ID number, so he has to pay twenty-five dollars for a duplicate license this year.
And that's it?
That's, that's what it said now, that was...
Correct.
Correct. Well, what did they ask you? I think they want to take a buck.
Because this ordinance didn't allow for that. That's one of the changes that they've been providing.
Alright. Just asking, I'm pretty good.
When we went...
I'm glad I came here because of, you know, now I'm learning and I'm good with this.
The whole concept behind your...
Level playing field. You said level of playing field.
With the level of playing field, so the big businesses or the...
Define big business.
Multi-million dollar business.
Walmart.
The example that got used in this room was hairdressers versus Walmart. There was a fifty dollar difference. Between what Walmart paid and the hairdresser paid. But the hairdresser made forty thousand dollars a year. Walmart last year did sixty-two million dollars.
They only paid a thousand dollars.
Oh my.
Okay.
Well, they were paying a hundred and fifty.
Right. So if you're, I think, I think the formula is stupid because if they're doing, how many, sixty million?
Sixty million is what they did last year.
Sixty million. I believe the formula is a little stupid because they'll be paying more than that. What, you know, look at other, what other cities or counties where there's Walmart?
Florence has the exact same ordinance. They cap theirs at ten thousand dollars.
There you go.
We didn't want to run a business like Dana out of the city for charging them with ten thousand dollar business licenses. It is better to have our employees, have employees have a place to work than it is for us to try to get ten thousand dollars from a business.
Okay.
So that is, so if to keep us from running people out of town or not having them come, we, they set a max of about a thousand, you know, we're, while yes, this generates revenue, we're not trying to make the city rich on the backs of the business people. That is not one.
That's some misinformation out there too. That's why one...
We don't want to run people away. We don't want people not to come because they're looking at going, I don't want to pay ten or twenty thousand dollars in business licenses every year on top of all my other taxes that I have. Why not go down the street?
We all have the same, I guess, like the same mindset that you have as far as, you know, Walmart should have to pay if they make that much. But you can't really separate, you know, or make a difference between Walmart and Dana. You can't say, well, because you're locally...
Okay. Alright, well, how does Boone County do it or Florence, City Florence do it?
They do it the same. They have the cap. They have...
Wasn't there a discussion that there's like, it changed gradually? It wasn't like a, they didn't go from a...
There are some cities that like ten thousand dollar cap that you kind of got a...
Some do. I honestly can't remember if it was Florence, just one of them or anything. There are some of them that do do that. Different things that way. Yeah.
One of the businesses, they say, well, it's not a...
Well, no, I got to go to work.
It is, if someone will not, if somebody doesn't fill out the form, then they're not compliant. If the form is not filled out correctly, we cannot issue a business license. The business license is not issued, a stock work order will be issued and they cannot...
How you going to enforce that? Somebody doesn't want to pay, how you going to?
That's where you tell your law.
That's...
Good deal. I'll be like on the porch.
Utilities and then we will take law enforcement with us to lock the doors.
There you go, Cal. She come down, lock me out, buddy. I'm ready to sit on the porch.
City provides one.
Correct.
So that's the only utility you're going to...
That's the only utility I can, I can control. Correct. Yes. Now, we don't want to do that. I mean, that doesn't mean anybody's doing good. I mean, that doesn't mean the city any good. It doesn't mean their employees any good or anything else. So we'll do every lot of possible and phone call and so forth to try to get things done. But if my hand gets forced, the ordinance states, if you don't validate business license, you can't do business in the city. And we will issue a stock work order and we will enforce it.
Yeah, ninety days?
There are times in there.
Well, I just, I've learned, I've learned theirs before, you know, because I have to go, now I have to go back.
And figure out what you're...
Figure out what I'm doing.
But if you know what your revenue is for just the city limits, that's all you're looking for. If you do enjoy your work outside the city limits.
That's just, outside of looking right five, what's in the city limit.
Correct.
But that's how, you know, when you think about it, that's better for you versus if you were to have to take your entire revenue or your revenue. You know what I mean? Pay...
When you're talking revenue, you're talking business strictly done in, what I do in my office over there.
Yes. But what I'm saying is, I know this is, it seems like a hassle, but the alternative is...
It is a hassle, but I'll learn how to deal with it.
Right. But the alternative would be to take your entire revenue, what you made last year, period, anywhere, and have to pay a percentage of that.
So what if I just decide to say, I don't want to document it. Here's a thousand dollars to you next year.
You have to provide the documentation.
Wow, here's a check. I'm giving you the maximum amount.
But I have to be able to do that. I have to be able to buy that to my auditors and I have to be able to...
Well, just tell them to come see me. You're spouse. That lot of speech for itself.
No. If your, if your form is not filled out properly, you will not be in compliance and you will not have a business license.
Okay, so...
There's, there's not a, the city... Then you make books out of it.
This isn't, I'd be trying to be speaking the mode. This is like, it's required.
What's your name, ma'am?
Sarah.
Sarah, okay. So I'm not trying to be, I'm just having, she's just trying to do her job.
And you're going to come back, I mean, you may tell me, I did five hundred dollars in this city. And I'm going to take what you tell me on your documentation, okay? And at any point, we have the ability to come to your office and do an audit. Okay, that's the order that's set.
Those are great. I've been through those too.
Right. So just know, whatever you give us, and then if you reported something incorrectly, then you have all the penalties and the fines and interest that go with that if we come audit. So the same thing is when you do your taxes.
What's it cost you to do the audit?
I don't know. I haven't had to do one yet. Please don't be my first.
I don't want that. I just want to, well, I'll pay my accountant more than you're out of cost, I promise. But, okay, I'm just trying to figure this out.
And part of this is on a commerce system. Do you know what I'm saying? So like when you say what your revenues are...
Yeah, I've got customers in Lexington, clients in Lexington. I mean, sort of run down the fake, hey, I've had an insurance customer down here.
No. Hopefully, maybe whenever you go in your system, you might be able to identify a way for you to flag these people. So this time next year, when you have to do it, it'll be easy for you to identify your City of Dry Ridge people.
I'll say you should because it's the payroll factor than the people tax.
Yeah.
I've got that. I mean, I've been trying to...
See, I'm saying, I'm trying to find an easier way. It doesn't take you a lot of time.
I've got a math assignment right there.
Yeah. So that way it won't take you a lot of time and it won't be expensive for you to do it. I think the first go around for everybody will be a little bit of a trial and error with the new form and trying to figure out what documentation do I need to have, where do I need to pull the information from? And I even told everybody, make a copy of it. Use it as a cheat sheet next year.
Yeah. You know, I've got a plan. If I knew anything about you. I just, I don't know.
But I'm, I mean, I think we're all glad that you're asking these questions because there is a lot of miscommunication, like you said, going around about, you know, what we, like people thinking that we set these, you know, standards, we set up...
They're just trying to be in compliance with the state because they're referring of you. I mean, you guys...
We sat here for a couple of meetings, two or three meetings, talked about this and asked for people, businesses. I made calls to businesses, not, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't call you specifically, but I asked people to participate.
You don't love me. I get it. It's all good.
There's a lot of businesses in the city. I was trying to find middle ones and some big ones and some in-between ones and I...
That's fine.
But also, but nobody wanted to participate.
Well, nobody wants to stand up and say, well, we can agree to disagree about stuff too. That's fine. And we'll go on down.
But we were wanting to have other people involved to help us say, okay, this is how it's going to affect us. I know Greg, he helped us with some of those numbers. You know, he confidentially, we didn't publicly spread it, but we did the calculations to see what, you know, the scenario that we were looking at.
Well, you got, you know, you got the parameters. You know, you've got a formula. It's just every business, I mean, and cities have to use, you've got to put your business hats on every day, just like we did. You know, there's a certain weight, there's an, there's an expense factor to run the City of Dry Ridge. You know, it is what it is. And you've got to, you have to do that.
Trying to look at what your, I think it was a hundred and fifty dollars last year.
Yeah.
So have you, do you have any idea what your numbers would be?
No.
Like, do you think you think more than eighty thousand dollars for just the city of Dry Ridge?
I have no clue.
Yeah, hell yeah. I'll tell you that much.
Obviously, I've never given a deposition. You never give a deposition. I don't recall. I don't remember. I'm not quite sure. By the way, you can't hurt yourself.
That's right.
And I understand.
I know your license is actually cheaper now.
Yeah. I get that. There's, there's formula for it. I get that. But my, my point about the yard sale, if you're doing business in Dry Ridge, I mean, it's what, and I understand, you know, exemptions. But some of these yard sale deals, hey, they make lots of money. I, I think if you, you know, you give an exemption, what city do y'all move here from?
Ludlow.
Ludlow. And, hey, down there...
Fifteen dollars and you didn't get any free, like, if you had a yard sale, you had to have a permit. Is that per day or is that, do you have a two or a three day? I think you could have up to a three day. Like it was...
Usually apply Sunday, but most of the people did cut up.
If they so wish to implement one of those, you would...
Well, like when you do, alright, like, you're doing this big twenty-five yard sale here. You know what? Hey, it's, one, is that a three day deal?
It's a four day.
Four days?
You know, it's...
The US twenty-five yard sale.
I'm sorry, on Thursday to Friday. Yeah, I was wondering, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
I know, I'm sorry, on Friday, Saturday.
You know, get a business like seventy-five dollars or fifty dollars cover all four days. I mean, that's twelve dollars a day.
You're putting it on their ass.
Because it, you know, it's not, I think they're pretty put, you know...
I don't know. But then you've got people who charge, like, you've got people who charge people to set up in their yard, set up in their blah blah. It's, I'm like, I don't agree with that. But you've got, I don't know, like, I feel like if we're going to do the permit thing like before, which I'm, I agree, I agree as far as, you know, if you have one yard sale a year, like me, like, I'm not going to have a yard sale to make money. I want to get rid of my crap. But there are these people, like you said, that do it and they make a lot of money, you know, doing this yard sale stuff and they do it multiple times a year. So, you know, if that's something that y'all felt, you know, strongly about, I don't see a problem in, you know, coming back in or requiring a permit and, you know, charging fifteen bucks for, you know, like you said, like a three day permit. There is there. I agree.
You probably end up breaking even anyway because you can't just say, hey, they had a license to set up and their neighbors, they didn't. What's yours going to know? So who's going to go around and check all that? That's going to be on...
I'm going to have land hours on the weekend.
Alright, okay.
And I'm going to get my code enforcement person to go out and...
Well, I mean, how much, alright, how much more traffic was there in town?
A lot.
Okay. Well, there you go. Well, I mean, it's, there's more traffic. I don't know. I was just asking.
I'm just saying, we just, you know, because most of the time that's when you're working, you're running businesses.
Yeah. And then you got runs because people are running into other people in the car.
Well, the idea, the intent of the ordinance was to level the field.
Yeah, and I understand that.
Now, it, there's no scenario that we've ever been able to find so far that made everybody happy. But what this tried to do was level out the playing field between the little guy and the big guy to base it on the prosperity of the business. Is that, you know, based on some...
And try to keep businesses in the city.
Yeah.
Right. And see, that's the other side of the coin, like when you're talking about, sorry, this is blocking. When you're talking about the US twenty-five yard sale, you've got to think, you know, yeah, we can charge for permits, but look at how much, look at how many people come into the city during those two days. Look at how much like, you know, it might not seem like a lot, but, you know, people coming to our businesses, coming to our restaurants, it's a boost, you know.
I get that and understand it, but some, you know, those people are going to be yard selling here, they're setting up for days.
Right. I, I, I just would...
You've got a balancing act there and then, I understand. You got to have balance, but same time, they're going to be doing business here. It's a big four day deal. Just like you're talking about your rocking the ridge deal. You don't have to do a lot of prep work for that. You got to get the inmates... In here, be for two justices, actor for the rocking, what's that cost? What's it cost to put that on?
Let's see, I learned this already to go directly into...
Be more specific then, because we'll get there. What did it cost you last year?
The numbers were fifty dollars.
I asked, we don't know what I should do. But this year we're looking at, um, everything total, we just...
Somewhere right, right around that, yeah.
Right around forty thousand.
What's it cost the city? Did you make money?
Last year?
Yeah.
No, but most events like that, you don't make money at least the first year. You have to build on. But most programs that we do, this is the thing that I didn't understand about some of the negative comments about where we lost money last year is technically, we lose money in the city. We lose money on about every endeavor it goes into because the city's not set up to make a profit on everything.
Why not?
Because we don't want to, like, take any more money from our residents than we already are. Like taxes are already high, water's already high. We know it, we get it, we can't change that. It sucks. So we want to do everything we can not to impose more, like, money, you know, take...
Well, like if you're going to do a deal like this, like whoever's going to run the beer beer, why doesn't the City of Dry Ridge do a thing? I mean, if you're serving, alright, my son goes to Catholic school and the one thing Catholics are good at is making money off of beer. And I'm going to tell you, yes, straight up, they're good at. They know how to do it. So why doesn't the City of Dry Ridge do a beer beer? You guys make the money. Help offset that cost.
Cause we're all Baptists.
What does that have to do with it? I know a lot of Baptists that drink beer, myself included. All drink the beer.
There's a lot, there's a lot of factors that go into that too, but I can't tell you.
Liability issues?
It's a lot of the liability.
Manpower, hours, plus there's the whole licensing thing.
I don't know. It's an idea for it.
Yeah. We looked into it.
So the, what we did is we sold that out as an exclusive. It's, it's a, the purchase, the person that bought the rights to do alcohol bought an exclusive right and they paid a lot of money to have that.
And they give that to you guys?
That comes straight to us.
Well, did you get that right in a percentage of sales then?
No, we did no percentage of sales.
Oh, okay. I was trying to help.
Well, when you try that, again, you go back to the whole honesty thing. How much did you sell? And then, so, did you sell five hundred dollars worth? Did you sell a thousand dollars worth? There's not cash register receipts at these kind of events. It's a cash thing. It's, you're, you're probably considering, so you just put that price way up there.
Let Kenny then run that down, be in charge of that. Don't let him get the sauce too much.
Yes, and sorry, that goes. We did some flexible down below as well. And they, they did take a percentage of the sales. But what they did was they, all the beer that was sold was from kegs and how many they packed. That's how they figured the percentage. As far as, to keep it on.
Yeah. And we put the price up to keep us from having to deal with all of that.
Look, I'm just saying, next time do both. Well, that's what's wrong with making money. If you're going to do that...
I had less than a dozen vendors last year. We had the ten percent on top of what they had. I have thirty-one vendors this year with a flat rate.
Okay.
So I was able to bring up a number of vendors with taking that ten percent out and getting rid of that and just kind of a flat rate that was higher to bring this...
I was specifically talking about the beer.
I understand. But I went that way, but that's what, that's what people were complaining about. And then, then if they don't make their money back in what they're paying to be here and then they have to give me a certain percentage on top of it, then they're even more in the hole and they don't want to take those chances. But if I had been put up a higher...
That's a nice view because there's lots of beer drank because I've been there, been doing things.
As we grow, we might be able to.
Well, you will. I'm telling you, do it right up front. Just like fifteen or twenty years ago, I told Darren Link, look, you all need to pass that moist boat and regulate it up front, how you want it done or the way Grant's growing. People that are moving in, they'll come in, they'll override it and they'll do it the way they want. Now, where do you want to be? You want to be at the front of the train or the back and hope you don't get whipped around and curled around?
Alright, so is there any more, you got any more specific questions? Alright, so is there any more, you got any more specific questions about business licenses? Do you all, anybody else, Greg, helpful?
We can go and talk about beer.
Hey, just do what you're gonna do.
I don't know, everybody's-
I thought we were on that one.
I'm like the, I'm, you said the state has different ways that we could use.
Yes, you can do different, so like-
I mean, I'm just, I'm just gonna do that, too.
You, you, you can do whatever you want, that's what I'm saying. They use this for gross and for receipts and for profit. So you do that.
How did we decide?
We decided that you could do a mixture, you could do flat rates, you could do-
How did we decide?
Yeah, we had discussion, and we did a proposal.
Yeah, we made a proposal and a recommendation based on gross receipts, because it was the easiest thing to track. Because the line I ran, right on the tax, they didn't have to do any other math. It was already something that they did on the-
And if you do that profit, you get down to people that don't, you're, you're, sole providers, if they do it right, they don't have that money.
Right. Yeah, Amy had this whole presentation, called it by that.
Yeah, that's, we had a month ago.
Yeah, we were-
I'm saying, Ken.
Yes, so, but, but the state, so, i- if we didn't go with this, we would have to talk about one more, you know, we don't wanna go with seats for no profit. Um, with that, but if you wanted to go, like, if we went with our flat rates, or something like that, you can, we just report to the state that we're doing with that. And in those points, when you're calculating something like that, then they say that I have to accept that one. That's not the only one I have to accept, but it's kind of slated, I have two of them. I don't wanna ruin that for you all, when it's, we can-
I just wanna make sure everybody knows, um, who, like, did you know that it was only from those, from the city limits?
No, I did not, that's, that's why I was, there's still a lot of this communication.
Yes, I'm gonna-
That's the key point, is because we can only charge you based on the bills that's under the city, or that's how all this is set up, and so, yeah.
But, but honestly, have you looked, have you looked at the form?
No, that's why I came here, because that would-
Just ask it, because that's, that's when some people get, get that way, because, and that's the questions I get also. And they have a look at the form to see where it's asking